Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the study session agenda for Lakewood City Council this Monday, October twenty eight. Twenty twenty four. We've got four items for discussion. The first of which is the review of the twenty twenty five property tax levy, and for this we'll have our deputy city manager, Tom Kraus.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. My items start on page four, the property tax levy. And this is for twenty twenty five. The IPD is above one percent. It's actually two point five seven percent. So the city is authorized by state law to increase the property tax levy by one percent. And the trend continues from what we have seen in previous years. Our assessed valuation is increasing, which means our levy rate decreases. And the proposed, the proposal is to increase the property tax levy by one percent, just as we have since two thousand six. And that results in a levy rate per one thousand of just sixty eight cents, which is down from last year's of seventy one cents per one thousand. So this will be coming back to you on November fourth for the public hearing and then adoption schedules for November eighteenth. And that concludes my presentation.
Based on a newspaper article I saw last week, it looks like Lakewood at the seventy cents or seventy one cents was tied for like the second lowest in the, in the county from what I can see. So this would be similarly about the second lowest in the county if everything holds equal for everyone else.
Yes.
Any questions? Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Does this keep the the tax amount the same, just adjusting the rates based on the the property values? Is that?
Um, no, it actually, our levy amount would also increase. So for twenty twenty four, our property tax levy total was about seven point nine million. And with the one percent increase, that would increase it to, um. Sorry, let me switch to the next page. Eight million eighty eight thousand. So it increases our property tax levy. The one percent does not, so let's just say your home, your property tax, doesn't necessarily increase by one percent. It's relative to others' increase in assessed valuation.
Okay, thank you. So it's a funky mathematical calculation, but the dollar change for the increase of one percent is one hundred and fifty six thousand two twenty three roughly, right?
I'm sorry, which page are you looking at?
Certainly, I'm looking at, it looks like page five of the packet.
Okay.
The chart under the paragraph analysis.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, I skipped this one. So the impact to the average homeowner, if we take the value of the average home at five hundred and forty five thousand, that levy rate, uh, one percent increase of sixty point six eight one nine results in a property tax, uh, paid to the city portion only. So I'm not including any of the state or fire or any of that, just the portion that the city receives. That amount is three hundred seventy one dollars and sixty eight cents. And when you compare that to if there was no increase of three hundred and sixty eight dollars, the one percent increase compared to the no increase for the average homeowner is three dollars and sixty three cents for the portion that is paid to the city.
Ten dollar.
Ten dollars and fifty six cents compared to twenty twenty four's levy.
And just look at the numbers real quick. So for the average home. It goes from three sixty eight or roughly three sixty one rather than three seventy one. So that ten fifty six, right?
Yeah.
That's annually.
Yes.
Yeah, for the average home at five forty five. Okay, very good. Any questions? Did you have one, Councilor Morrison?
Not directly. I just, I think I understand how it works. So we're increasing the total dollar value that we are taxing, right? But the total cost per individual homeowner doesn't change by that same amount because it gets spread equally amongst everybody.
Yes.
Right.
Based on the A B, yes.
Thank you.
Because it's spread like this, then the mill rate comes down a little bit.
Yeah, our A V increases, levy rate goes down.
Well, and conceivably, everyone's overall property values has gone up more than that one percent.
Right.
Right. And that's what drives it.
Yeah. And so people, when they get their tax statement next summer, they'll say, what? My taxes have increased is because their assessed evaluation has gone up, even though our mill rate has gone down from seventy cents to sixty eight cents. They'll see, just because of the rise in overall values, that's what gets people.
Right. If we were able to increase relative to the property values going up, we'd be considerably higher right now. But we're limited to that one percent by state law, right?
Yes.
Yeah, correct. State law, yeah. Great. Anything else on that? I assume that'll come forward at the next regular meeting then for the adoption.
Yes, for November fourth is the public hearing and then adoption scheduled for November eighteenth.
Very good. So next we'll move to the twenty twenty four year end budget adjustment. And I know Ms. Kraus is going to walk us through that.
Yes. So for the year end budget adjustment, you have seen, oh, I'm sorry, this is on page fifteen. So this is the year end budget adjustment during Q two, second quarter's financial report. You saw a lot of variances compared to where I thought we should be based on the budget. Some of those items were really high. So for example, capturing police's salaries and benefits based on filling all positions, um, that, and then also taking into consideration of collective bargaining agreements that were settled and where positions actually play some, you know, positions were vacant at the time. It took into consideration like their medical benefits. Some people, you know, were set, uh, placed at, um, higher medical benefits. Some were at lower. So really, as part of the year end estimate for the twenty five and twenty six budget, um, I took into consideration of where I thought twenty twenty four would end. So a lot of these adjustments you saw in the quarter, uh, second quarter financial report. I had a page explaining where those variances were coming from and that they would be adjusted as part of the year end budget adjustment. But that year end budget adjustment also was factored into the twenty five and twenty six budget adjustment. So really, this affects just twenty twenty four and the types of budget adjustments, you know, there, there are adjustments that are funded by grants and contributions. There's continuation of capital projects, and in some instances, we have some, uh, new requests as well. So I'm not going to go through the details of the narrative as they're spelled out on each of these pages, but I will skip to page twenty six. And, um, page twenty six provides a summary of the proposed, um, budget request. And it's broken up by, um, you know, the different funds. So general fund, for example, on the top of page twenty six has three million eight hundred and ninety three thousand five hundred and seventy seven in revenues. And on the expenditure side, there's an increase of three million one hundred and sixty three thousand five hundred and eighty one. You'll see that I've, uh, increased some of these revenues, which we've realized or we anticipate to realize. Development services, for example, coming in at two point one million more than anticipated. Uh, property taxes seeing an increase, uh, sales tax, S, and utility tax are both anticipated to increase. And we, you know, talked about the decrease in gambling tax, so making that adjustment. And we're seeing decreases in fines and forfeitures, um, under court. And then there are some other grant funded, um, adjustments, uh, such as the O P D. Um, we got the distribution for abatement funds, um, some costs, uh, some revenues associated with other types of contracts for our police, um, department. There's an adjustment for the video that was made for the police department, and I'm not sure if you saw that yet. But that's twenty eight thousand nine hundred. The big amount, um, is at one point six million dollars in police salaries and benefits. And really, the good news about that really is we've accounted for it in the year estimates, but also places fully staffed. Um, so, and that's been a while since they've been fully staffed.
Quick question for you. If you know, the transfer from property abatement, what did we repay it on the six forty?
Yeah, so, um, I can't remember the exact year. I have it in the details here. But you remember the Carwan Village, and we needed to do the demolition, but we didn't.
So that was that one?
Yeah. So there was five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand there. And then we had made sure that the property abatement fund had enough money to do those abatements, recognizing that the lean revenues would come in. Well, we did receive a good portion of it. We received over one point one million dollars in lean, uh, revenues, so repayments to the fund. And so essentially what we're doing is paying the general fund back over a number of years. I think it goes from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty.
How much should we try to keep in the abatement fund roughly?
Um, we don't really have like a target amount to keep in the abatement fund. Um, what Jeff usually does is gives an idea of what types of abatements he would do. And then just in communication with the director on where they're looking at, um, spending. So for example, with the Carwan Village, you know, we were aware that, hey, we're going to do this abatement, but we really don't have the funds for it. So we recognize that, well, we'll take it from the general fund. And then when the payment comes back in, we'll return the funds to the general fund.
Okay.
And really, our goal is to protect the general fund.
Right.
And then we have some other transfers. So for example, our L I D guarantee, as long as we have L I Ds outstanding, we need to keep a certain amount. And so this is the amount in excess of the requirement. I think we're required to keep about ninety three thousand. So we're free to return that to the general fund. Um, we also have been making excess payments, um, early retirement of debt. So anytime that we have, uh, money coming into the, um, the, uh, L I D debt service funds, we try to buy down on that. So just pay off in increments of five thousand. Well, that's resulted in some huge savings in interest for the city. And, um, that then just becomes general fund revenue if the city council approves. Our information technology fund, um, you know, had been accumulating reserves for some items such as our phone system. But as you can see in the twenty five and twenty six budget, we were able to fund the projects that were listed in priority uh, for the twenty five and twenty six budget. And so these funds are not needed. They had been accumulating over time. So we're just essentially returning it to the general fund.
Okay.
Okay.
Explain to me the tactical tailor reimbursement with the W C I A assessment.
So part of the lease agreement for tactical tailor is that they are responsible for the insurance portion. And so we've been accumulating that insurance, um, portion of it over the past few years. And now we are just returning it to the general fund.
Done. Okay.
So really, those are the big ones for the, um, general fund. And the other funds are special revenue funds. So they have the separate funding sources with the exception of the street O N M fund. But the street O N M fund is also being accounted for in the general fund. So, um, we've made them whole by transferring monies from the general fund. Um, transportation benefit district, you're aware of that, eight hundred and thirty five thousand. We've delayed issuing the bonds. The funds were not needed for transportation projects, and we were able to, um, shuffle the monies around to be able to fund the interlocken bridge repair. Um, we have a couple entries just from an accounting perspective, really no value, no money. Um, in the lodging tax fund, you'll see it again in our internal service funds. Uh, for subscription based accounting, it's just become more complicated, but we also don't want to exceed our, um, legal authority for that. Um, we have some, uh, quite a few of the public safety grants, and it's important that we capture them so that we don't exceed at the fun level there. And then on page twenty seven, um, again, it has to do with the payments back to the general fund, um, on those items that I mentioned. And then for the capital improvement projects, not a whole lot, but in the, um, park C I P fund, we have some, um, interest that we're allocating towards the Ward's Lake project. Harry Todd Park has some grants as well as the Ward's Lake Park. Um, on the transportation side, we mentioned the interlocken bridge. And then there's a couple adjustments for the Edgewater, Washington Boulevard Edgewater, that's just funded by a grant. And then capturing the Lakewood Water District's portion of Hipkins Road. On this sewer project C I P, these are funded basically by the sewer availability charge or the sewer surcharge. So they're dedicated for sewer improvements. So we're capturing those there. And then the surface water management fund doesn't have anything on its own. It's just more of an impact on the internal service charges, um, for the internal service charge funds. Police has one vehicle replacement, uh, requested to be funded by insurance proceeds at eighty five thousand. The vehicle's been declared a loss, and so want to get that going so that we get the vehicle timely. And then on the property management fund, this is also, um, included in the year end estimate when we did the twenty five and twenty six budget. And this is the city hall beam repair, the city hall beam painting, which is different than the beam repair, and then the server room air conditioner of twenty five thousand.
I think the air conditioner is working well.
Very well today.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then the risk management. So mostly everything that's in the internal service I've brought up in the operating funds. And so the next, um, item that's scheduled is the public hearing on November fourth and then scheduled for adoption on November eighteenth. And that completes my presentation.
Very good. Any questions, Mr. Brandstetter?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you. When I look at pages, uh, twenty six and twenty seven, which are intended to be the recap with all the that are over there. And it, and it said where it says in the column that says year twenty twenty four, there's a revenue column and an expenditure column. And so where there's a number that there is some change from the current biennial budget.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so. So what does it mean if something is, um, and, and looking at the opioid abatement funds? Okay. And, and, and they are listed on, um, you know, page twenty six up in the, um, the general fund. And it shows an increase in revenue of three hundred eighty eight thousand three twenty and an increase in expenses of three hundred and eighty eight thousand three twenty. And yet, the, in the previous sections of it, it said none of the opioid abatement funds have really been spent. So I, I guess what is the, what is the expenditure column trying to tell me there?
So really, this is to say that we received three hundred and eighty eight thousand in opioid funds, and we're earmarking it for only opioid expenditure related, um, eligible expenditures. So it's not to say that we're spending it, but we want to earmark it and, uh, designate it just for the opioid. So you'll still see the same process for whatever that process is in order to spend those monies. If I didn't put this in here, it'll show that general fund has three hundred and eighty eight thousand more than it truly has. So say next year, you'll see the carry forward budget adjustments. You'll see that this three hundred and eighty eight thousand is going to be a carryover. You won't see a revenue side, but you will see an expenditure side uh, because we won't have expended it by the end of this year. So if you look at it in terms of you're taking in money, where is that money designated? It's designated for future opioid expenditures.
Yeah, I guess the, the term expenditure seems odd to me in, in this, in this case. Okay. And but what you're saying is we receive, one column says we receive this much money.
Yeah.
And the other column where it says expenditure is saying that we're banking it.
We're budgeting it. So really, for governmental, I mean, we really have revenues and expenditures in terms of, um, budget authority. And so I, it, it falls under, it's going to be revenue coming in because it is monies coming into the city. When we spend it, it's going to be an expenditure. So I, I think it's just maybe just terminology, but.
Well, I, I, I guess it is a matter of transparency as I am trying to have someone in the public look at this. A person in the public would look at this. It says we've got three hundred and eighty eight thousand, and we spent it on something. Okay. But the reality is we didn't spend it on anything.
And you did, actually didn't spend any of this really, because remember, this is.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. So, so I'm saying having an amount in an expenditure column, again, does not seem transparent because in my and most people's definition of expenditure is, now that we've expended it, it's gone. But what we're really saying is that we got the revenue, but it's still going to be there at the end of the year.
This is really showing that it's designated just for opioid expenditures.
Okay. Is, is there something previously before page twenty six? That explains that?
Yes, page seventeen.
So, yeah, I'm looking at the, the page on page seventeen.
So page seventeen talks about where we're getting the money, the timing of the money, and how the estimates were made. The revenues and expenditures, um, you know, if you're, if you're looking at the appropriate term, if you look at our budget ordinances, our budget ordinances are adopted by the amounts that are shown as revenues and the amounts that are shown as expenditures. And that's how we arrived at the columns for revenues and expenditures. Not everything that is budgeted is going to be spent necessarily, but we need to be able to incorporate it. And by not putting in an amount in the expenditure side, what you would see is an overinflated amount in the general fund, because this here doesn't talk about, um, if we didn't budget that three hundred and eighty eight thousand, there's nothing in your ordinance that says, and then ending fund balance of eight point five million, back out the three hundred and eighty eight thousand reserves for this. So this is really showing on your backside, this is your budget ordinance, and that's why it's reflected the way that it is.
So, and again, it was, I, I, I'm looking at the thing that seems odd to me that we received it and expended it is on page twenty six and down in page twenty seven, which is essentially a, a page that has everything other than the general fund. Is, is that it? So where in this do I see that the earmarked opioid funds are in the ending fund balance?
So that's what I'm trying to explain is if I, if you look at just that one item, line item for the opioid funds, if I showed just the revenues coming in, but no expenditures budgeted, and remember, this is only budgeted. This doesn't talk about it being spent at all. I understand there's a certain process that must, uh, you know, be vetted be in order to spend those monies. All I'm saying is we took in three hundred and eighty eight thousand, and at some point, we're going to spend that three hundred and eighty eight thousand because it has to be used for a specific purpose. On page, uh, let's see, page thirty one is where we talk about the budget ordinance. If I did not put the expenditure side of the abatement or the opioid, instead of seeing in the ending fund balance of eight million five hundred and eighty thousand, you'll see ending fund balance of the eight million five hundred and eighty thousand plus the three hundred and eighty eight thousand. That would not be transparent because that's saying we have more money in the general fund than we actually do. When the only purpose of those opioid funds is you can only use it for specific, um, expenditures as spelled out in the agreement.
Okay, I guess I don't understand that changing that number would reflect that we have more money than we actually do. I mean, we do have the three hundred and eighty eight thousand.
Yes.
Maybe I can add some clarity, hopefully. It is kind of challenging when it says expenditure as opposed to expenditure slash budgeted, because it probably won't get expended until twenty five. So this will end up being a carry forward adjustment for twenty five, I assume, right?
Yeah, but that is also true of your capital projects. When you budgeted the capital projects, we're not planning on spending it necessarily all in one year. It's on a project length. So whatever the budget is for twenty twenty four, what's the likelihood that everything in the, in the capital projects is going to be spent?
It's just, I think the nomenclature, the word expenditure.
So, so what we're saying is we received three hundred and eighty eight thousand.
We've budgeted.
And we could have spent it. Okay.
Or it's been.
Uh, and it was available to be expended. At the end of the year, when we don't expend it, uh, or we only expand a small amount of it, because some of it, we're going to expand a little bit of it because we gotta give some to the county. It's just some others. But it will, um, it will, it will, it will, it will show up. But it isn't been designated as a specific, you see it's, it's earmarked, but it isn't been designated as a specific fund per se. It's all still swimming around in the general fund.
It's swimming around in the general fund in a very specific spot. And before the city can spend it, I believe it has to go through a certain process. It has to go through a certain.
Right.
And then vetted through the city council before the actual expenditure can occur. But those expenditures or the way that it's spent has to be, um, in, uh, consistent with the authorized uses of those funds.
Okay. And, and so is, is this biennium, this, this adjustment is for, this is the first biennium in which there was any revenue of those sort of funds?
No, we have been receiving those monies, and we've been earmarking them to be spent. And I'm not going to use the word earmarking, um, just to eliminate any confusion, but basically. But basically, if you have money coming in for a specific purpose, like the opioid funds. You have to use it for a, in a certain way. And by putting the expenditure side, we're saying that we received the opioid monies, but we can only spend it in a certain way. And so that's why you're seeing the expenditure on that line item. But keep in mind that this is a budget adjustment. It does not have anything to do with the actual expenditures. And the term revenues and expenditures, that's the way the budget ordinance is set up. It is basically beginning balance, revenues, expenditures, and ending balance. And you see that throughout your budget document. Those are the categories that you use.
I'm, I'm just concerned that when you have a three hundred and eighty eight revenue, three hundred and eighty eight expenditure. It looks like you have an ending balance of zero.
For the opioid fund, you want to have an ending balance of zero because what we're saying is. We're taking in money that's been distributed to us for the purpose of opioid funds. We are going to use that money only for opioid funds. And that's why you'll see a budgeted ending balance of zero for those amounts. That's really no difference than, let's say that you have a, um. The choice healthcare authority grants. If we got a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for it, we're not gonna spend it all in one year. We're gonna show the revenues coming in as a hundred and thirty thousand. We're gonna show the expenditures of a hundred and thirty thousand. If we showed something less, then what you really are doing is skewing the amount of ending fund balance. So all we're saying is, so if you look at it.
They've been obligated effectively, right?
It's been obligated. It's just for that purpose only, like your ARPA.
Yeah. I think Mr. Boki has his hand raised. Mr. Brenner will come back to you if you have another question, but Paul's been waiting patiently there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, I've got a couple of questions and a comment. Ms. Cross, ba- back to the opioid one. Have we, given that the, the opioid monies are supposed to come in for a decade or more. I think one of them is gonna be like payout over umpteen years. Have we considered, and is there a reason why we're not considering? Just using it as a special revenue fund rather than keeping it in the general fund?
So really, the general fund can account for anything that is not required to be accounted for in a different fund. So there is not a requirement that the opioid funds go to a specific fund. So for example, real estate excise tax, you have to put that in a different fund. Um, or if you have seizure funds, you need to put that in a separate fund. But anything that is not required specifically to go into a special revenue fund. Can stay within the general fund.
So you, you, you made that call on that. But we are gonna have this confusion on running for the next few years, I, I think.
Yeah.
But I'll, 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 I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. I, I do, I do wanna revisit what you mentioned earlier about this LID service. Transfer to the general fund, the three hundred and forty four thousand. Can, I, I think I missed what, how that works. How did, is it a windfall of sorts, or is it money that we had already sent over, or is it just return of money, or what, what is it?
With the LID funds, when, um, the taxpayers or the, uh, those who benefited from the LID improvement. They're on a payment schedule and that payment schedule, um, says how much they're required to pay to the city. On the payment side, the city doesn't necessarily have a payment schedule. Whatever money comes in. Then the city can use that money and pay off the debt service early. And we've done that on a number of occasions. So that doesn't change the amount that the, the, uh, the debtor has to pay. They still submit the same amount. We're just not paying interest on it because we've already made the debt service payment.
Okay, so we made debt service payments early on some of this LID.
Yes.
Stuff. Well, do, do you know what specifically it was, which one it was, or was it?
Oh, it's been over, I mean, the ten years that I have been here, there have been a lot of early payments.
Okay. Okay, great. And then I, I do wanna make a comment and I, and it, and it reflects well on, I think, well on the city. That, um, in the, in the sewer project, the CIP Fund three eleven. The three projects that, um, there's three projects and we're being asked to. Put in an additional over one point one million dollars. And that looks like it's because the bids are just coming in higher than we had anticipated. And I wanna remind everybody, this is where we're getting somewhere in the neighborhood of like about two and a half million dollars. If you look in the. In the information provided, w- we're getting about two and a half million dollars of county ARPA money. And I, I just wanna note, you know, there, there are a lot of entities that wouldn't be able to come up with this additional one point. One million dollars and, and this is a good thing that we can. That we have that, that ability to do that and get those projects done. And, and what's, you know, everyone knows this has been a long term project for the city of, of Lakewood to sewer that areas, those areas out there. So I, I just wanna note that that's a real positive. I think it's a positive reflection on the city.
Any else, Mr. Boki?
That's it.
Very good. Any other questions? Mr. Brenner, did you have a follow up? Any else? Very good. So this likewise comes back after.
Yes, November fourth public hearing and then, um, adoption on November eighteen.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so next we have the introduction of the twenty twenty five comprehensive plan docket. Starts on page thirty two of our packet. And for this, we have our planning manager, Ms. Spear.
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, Tiffany Spear. Um, I'll be walking through, uh, the PowerPoint, but this also is in your packet, starting at page thirty two. So even though we just barely got done with the twenty twenty four, um, periodic review process, which was quite, um. Rigorous, uh, we're now into the process that we do every year to have the council set a docket. That is then analyzed and reviewed winter, spring, and then next summer would come, or next late spring will come back to you after being recommended. Uh, by the planning commission for adoption next spring slash summer by the council. So these are not, um, even drafted in some cases yet. These are the topics that are being recommended to you either by the planning commission or by staff to include. In the list of amendments to be considered next year. So the, uh, overview, as you see, is we are doing a little bit faster than we might normally. Because there are several things that are required by state law to be completed by June thirtieth. And given what, uh, is happening with calendaring right now, it looks like that's not gonna be a problem at all. Uh, up to this point, the planning commission did hold two public hearings on this list and then they adopted a resolution twenty twenty four oh seven. Which was provided to you in tonight's packet. There are eleven proposed amendments recommended by the planning commission. We'll walk through those quickly. And then there's a twelfth proposed amendment that the city is recommending to council to add to the list. And just to note, I'll go into more detail here as well. Out of the eleven that the planning commission have recommended to you. There are two that the, uh, city itself is actually not recommending be included in the list. So here are the eleven that are in the resolution from the planning commission. First is, uh, one that requires changes to our code to be consistent with. Uh, and gross substitute house bill nineteen ninety eight regarding co-living housing. Co-living is the new name. I guess you would think of it also in the past as single room occupancy type of housing units. This is something that is, um, something we have to do per state law. The second is also, uh, the start of a series of amendments that are required by what's, um, affectionately called HB eleven eighty one. It is actually requiring eventually a six year process to review a number of the elements in the comprehensive plan. To make sure that they incorporate climate change and resiliency within their policies. And then that also would need to be reflected in regulations as well. So the second amendment there is for the first set of that, which relates to the, uh. Parks, utilities, and capital facility elements of the comprehensive plan. The third amendment relates to additional updates to our regulations to make sure that they comply with. House Bill eleven ten, and that was talked about in the twenty four process. That's the bill that requires quote middle housing to be planned for in Lakewood. And that is anything from a duplex up to a sixplex plus other multifamily, um, historically called. Housing units to be allowed in single family areas. So this is kind of a step two to what the city council already adopted. Number four is, uh, simply an update to a definition regarding multi-unit residential buildings. Number five is updates to what the city can or may, uh, include in its regulations regarding residential parking. Number six is a technical update. Um, there were several things that we have now found as time has gone by that were accidentally. Either located in the wrong place or dropped unintentionally when the whole rewrite of the Title eighteen A. Package happened back in twenty nineteen. So this one is related to civic uses where there's some language that should be in there. It never was intended to be dropped, but we need to put it back in. Number seven is the commute trip reduction plan update. This is, uh, the current plan goes through the end of twenty four, twenty five through twenty nine is the next five year plan. We have been partnering this year with Pierce County to create this, uh, template, if you will, that Lakewood has then. Specified certain things in for itself. So that'll be ready to go without any issues and it will have already been approved. At the state level by agencies that need to look at it. Number eight is looking at the, uh, opportunity, if you will, for the city to allow. First, uh, a tax deferral or rebate, uh, sorry if I can't be more detailed. Regarding allowing commercial buildings to be used in residential, for residential uses. So that's something that, uh, I would bring more to you, should you be interested in including that in this list. We would ask that you do. And then more would come to you later to make a final decision up or down. Uh, number nine is the recommendation that came from one of our planning commissioners to consider expanding the boundaries of the station district sub area. Number ten is a recommendation, again, from a planning commissioner who wanted to create a new sub area plan specifically for. What you see in quotes there, a district or area north of Silicon Boulevard and west of South Tacoma Way. And then the eleventh is a request for a rezone, uh, that, uh, particular parcel which was historically. Split zoned between air corridor and industrial. It was rezoned to be completely air corridor in twenty nineteen. The parcel owner has now come back to the city and requested that that split zoning be reinstated because of what they hope to be able to do on the property. So again, out of all of those, the nine of the eleven, the city would recommend as well. Those amendments nine and ten are the ones that the city would request not be included in the list. And I've already gone through all of this, so this is gonna be even faster. Unless there's any questions on any one of them, I should slow myself down, actually.
Sure, Councilmember Pearson.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so number eight, how affordable housing and commercial building zone regulations, so. It talks about a ten year period and you don't have to pay it back if the project meets the qualifications. How, how is this different than like these other tax exemptions for, for multifamily and stuff? What, what's the? Why is this unique, I guess, or different?
What you're doing here is actually taking currently commercially zoned properties and allowing them to be used for residential uses. So it's one more step of trying to find a new source for affordable housing, um, to, uh, real estate, basically. It is not taking a residential multifamily zoned piece of property and doing something with them. It's actually saying, if you take vacant. Uh, or underutilized commercial property, mm-hmm, and convert it into residential. There's an opportunity for the city, should it want to, to impose this, uh, retail sales and tax deferral. It's another tool in the toolbox, if you will.
I, I guess, don't people have the opportunity to do that currently? Can't you make, uh, multifamily and commercial zones as it is?
It is saying you can take a commercial property and put residential uses in that. Right now, that's not allowed in commercial properties. It would be allowing more than what is currently allowed in a commercial zone.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Just, just a quick question on that and then I'll turn to Mr. Brenner. I don't know if any of our. Commercial zones disallow multifamily currently or not? Do they all include multifamilies in allowable use?
No, they don't. So.
Effectively.
Yeah.
Creates that rezone, if you will.
It allows additional options for residential uses in other parts of the city or in parts of the city where currently it couldn't happen. And it also is an opportunity for the city to incentivize it through this, um, tax deferral.
So like neighborhood commercial zones, they have a little office space, now all of a sudden, boom, can be converted to apartments.
Yeah.
Wow, okay. Uh, Mr. Brenner, then Mr. Pearson.
Yes, so what the description doesn't say. And this is just a description of something yet to be written, is that. It doesn't say that. The city can create a program that does this under these guidelines. We're not mandated to do it, but it, but we're allowed to do it, but, but the state law allows us to establish the program.
Correct. This is something that would be brought to you as a question, council. Do you even wanna proceed with this? Yes.
Okay, and so what this page doesn't say is. It doesn't say that, um. It's, each individual project is subject to. Approval by the council. And like, like a multifamily tax exemption is, you know, there are rules that says. Under these parameters, you can qualify one. Or would that be something that would then be written into the? Established by resolution, so not by ordinance, but by resolution, we establish this program.
What you're establishing by resolution, I think, is a deferral program. What you're then doing, especially under the third bullet there on the slide, is that. In order for this to work, there are in, uh, additional affordability and income eligibility conditions that the city council would adopt. So this is, we're like, step half, not even a step one. This is city council, do you even wanna explore this? This is a choice. If the answer is yes, then we would need to start putting together something for you to look at and say yes or no to.
And so I'm trying to envision if I have a commercial building and I convert it to. Apartments of some size. Then I'm. And have the sales and use taxes deferred. Are these the taxes on the construction costs? I tried to figure out if I have an apartment building, what are the sales and use taxes. Involved here? Yeah, no, no, is it upfront sales and use tax on when you make, make the modifications? You know, is with any sort of construction project, there, you, there's materials and things and, and you, and you have the taxes. But. There aren't ongoing taxes that go on, uh, with it. Actually, it's not clear to me what. Sales and use taxes they're referring to.
I can certainly bring that information to you before the public hearing. I don't have it in my head right now, this evening, Mr. Brenner, but it is. This again is setting the docket. This is not adopting the program. So I will bring you that information and then as the council decides which it wants to include in the docket, you, you'll have that.
Oh, okay, so, 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 jumping ahead to June.
Mm-hmm.
If this is, remains on the docket and it comes to us, it would come to us with. The per- the parameters of, of, of the program that we would be approving if we were to approve it at that time.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Boki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I guess my comments on eight are. I, I, I'm thinking that the, the legislature was reacting to empty office buildings in downtown Seattle and, and maybe some other. Larger areas, um, and, and there's a recognition that. Because the floor plates are designed for offices and not for residences, that, that they have to provide some incentives for it. My mind, this just adds. My mind, this just adds for us, you know, we have empty storefronts and empty properties. Uh but I I'm not sure that we need to talk about tax deferrals. I mean, we're we're already thinking about offering them the property tax deferral, let alone the sales and use tax referral. I mean, we we walk away with nothing. So I I'm not, I'm not, I don't think I fully understand that, and 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 I think we might be getting ahead of ourselves on number eight. I guess my question is, is on the next two, number nine. Where where I didn't attend the planning commission meeting where they discuss these next two, nine and ten. Um what are what are they thinking about in nine, and what's the thought process behind that?
Um to answer your question, if that's all right, uh Councilmember Bokey, this is uh one of the recommendations that came from a single planning commission member, and the planning commission as a whole said, yes, included in the docket list for council to consider. I don't think you would say that all of them agreed with this idea. Some of them do. But uh as it sits, they understood this was coming forward for you to decide if you wanted to include it in the docket or not. But as presented by the commissioner who was interested in it, uh he felt that the Springbrook area should be part of the station district sub area uh because similar regulation and similar development patterns would be appropriate in both places. Uh the reason that the city is saying please don't include this in your list is because making any changes to the station district sub area boundaries would require a new E I S to be um planned. It would require different uh planning for jobs and housing targets. And there's just simply not the budget to do that, first of all, but there's also the split between uh Springbrook and Station District of I five. And so the actually Springbrook in and of itself has been identified in the comprehensive plan as needing its own sub area at some point, sub area plan. So rather than going this route of combining them, if the council were to want to do something here, the city would recommend its own sub area for Springbrook.
Okay. And number ten, wh- where are they? How far you want, I mean, we're talking about a pretty large area, district area north of Silicon Boulevard, west of South Tacoma Way. How? How big is it?
It's actually, if you look at the citywide map, not very big. Um and in the P P W department's opinion, this is actually kind of small to be its own sub area, particularly since, again, in the comprehensive plan, there's discussion about creating a sub area plan for the whole international district, which would be uh a larger area along the the spine of South Tacoma Way. So rather than doing this particular area, again, if the council wanted to do this, we would suggest a larger boundary than what's being proposed here. And uh again, it requires funding and work plan amendment to do it.
Okay, so when you when you say west of South Tacoma Way, there I think north of Silicon Boulevard, west of South Tacoma Way, you run right away into flat and you run into cemetery and flat and schools and everything else. I mean, how far west? So, okay.
Again, it's not very far. Yeah, it's basically, if I'm remembering right, six or seven properties. It's not
Oh, okay.
It's not a large area.
Okay.
So uh one of the reasons why the the city is requesting it not be included.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Laura Sala, uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um going back to eight first, uh the residential use of commercial buildings. On the surface, I like the idea of more housing, right? That's something we need. But I also think of if we were trying to put an apartment in between the subway and Lakewood Music over here or a residential space there, there are consequences to the neighboring businesses that they may not be able to operate in their commercial way for doing that. So I think understanding the consequences of doing that would be important. Um on number nine, uh the potential of adding Springbrook to the station district. Uh I think we need to wait, and as we mentioned, think of Springbrook as its own potential uh sub area. I think we should wait until we have the improvements that Sound Transit is putting in out there before we get too far into it. Um and then for number ten, uh international district, I think, needs to be looked at in a much larger view than just those six or seven properties. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on that? So it sounds like we have some, Mr. Brandstad.
I I guess that I would that I would just say that that first of all, that I agree with the staff recommendation to not put nine and ten on this particular docket, I think. Yeah, I I I think that there is a off into the future, the you you know, when we when we've developed sub area plans, whether it be the downtown plan or the station district and to lesser extent, more recently, the update of the Silicon Neighborhood Plan. You know, yeah, that 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 we've started off with the intention of doing something that is comprehensive and and holistic and and able to do that, and that and that the starting points were not a decision like this. The starting points were a community outreach piece and making sure that 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 there was, whether it was a business community in terms of the downtown or whether it was an entire ne- the neighborhood community in terms of the station district to be able to go and do that. And I think the international district, um you know, you we look at a sub area plan that runs all the way from the north edge of the city to wherever we decide that district would end, which could be south of Silicon Boulevard uh always to do that. You know, you 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 start that in a in an other way, not through this process by this approving it in 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 this manner. So I'm not necessarily looking at and 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 that's true for all the other areas. So so nine and ten seem somewhat premature and even the wrong process to begin to 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 create new sub area plans to be able to go and do that. I honestly, um you know, number eight, the conver- conversion of commercial buildings. That sounds like trying to apply a Seattle solution to Lakewood or Tacoma solution of where in Tacoma, there are large big commercial buildings that ended up empty in the downtown and other areas and that and that they they have people who are working to to convert them into or or in in their entirety or partially to residential uses to be able to go and do that, but they tend to be fairly large projects to be able to go and do that. And for all the rhetoric that we have about we need to get going and we need to have personal housing and we need to make them new, the affordable housing fit into these bands in terms of being able to do that. We don't achieve that by throwing as many things against the wall and seeing what sticks. We 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 start off with with first of all, we have we have any number of of things in the works that are that are that are designed to do that, that are that our zoning is allowable for for doing that. Uh and so 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 I I I would not be supportive of including number eight. Uh and and number eight in the docket this time. Uh we'll see what comes out in the public hearing uh before we have to actually make those those decisions to be able to go and do that. And then with respect to number six, and number six really has to do with the with we as a council inadvertently dropping some zoning about uh mobile home parks and some other things, some some elements of the code out of it of putting them back, but they were I I'm I'm fine with keeping it in the docket, but I would say that I that that not with the intent of just reinstating exactly what was there before. Um that uh so that 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 take the opportunity to take language that is fifteen and twenty years old that we inadvertently dropped and to just say, well, we'll put it back in. The topic areas of mobile home parks and recreational vehicle parks and things like that, which I think is with that.
That's actually in a different um topics or
So that's, so then what is this inadvertent?
This is like civic uses, like where can a city hall be placed in your city? Or where can a a library be sat at civic uses, not um zoning for commercial or residential uses? So it it really is technical stuff.
Something that we dropped out of the code?
It by mistake, yes, yes. If you remember, the rewrite was shifting all kinds of things around.
I I I guess that then maybe before I decide whether I want to include this in the docket, I'd like to see what it was that was dropped that needs to come back.
Yeah.
Um to decide whether it's meaningful enough to 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 do to do that. Um, that's it.
So do we have consensus that uh nine and ten, the recommendation by staff, uh that those proposed amendments not move forward to the planning commission?
Yep.
So nine and ten, Mr. Pearson.
And I I'm I'm um also fine with eight not moving forward. I think that there was at least a couple, two, three others that um had feelings that way.
Looks like consensus do not have eight move forward.
Yes.
Yeah, I I think on that, although I think that where we are in the process that eight, nine and ten uh still have to be commentable at the public hearing. Uh it was, I mean, the public hearing has sort of been announced, and this has been put out there. I don't think we could take them off of that. It's it's when we get to to having the action on the final docket that that I guess that was, that's what I would want to do.
Yeah, the process we're in is, this is the study session for the public hearing to set the docket. So once the docket is set, that is when you would vote up or down on any one of these amendments. And then next spring is when you actually get to see the language. It's a bureaucratic process that we're in.
Yeah. Okay.
So
Mostly to set the word plan for the planning commission.
Correct.
But by way of a public hearing first?
Yes, yes.
That no one will comment on?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then if you'd bear with me, Mr. Mayor, what we have here is the recommended amendment that the planning commission did not have in front of them. This is actually uh being recommended because starting next year, Puget Sound Regional Council is doing a new process to periodically come back and look at its uh designated regional growth centers. And Lakewood's roughly, or actually, right now, it's exactly the same boundaries as the downtown sub area uh is the regional growth center that P S R C uh first identified and appointed um uh designated, I think, in twenty sixteen, if not twenty thirteen. And so what we need to do to get ready for that review, long story short, is on a market study. We are proposing that that be done internally, and so it would be ready as part of the comp plan review. And the package would be finished and adopted by you again presumably before June thirtieth of twenty five, and that will be in time to get it in front of Puget Sound Regional Council when they review our center. So this is saying, we've got to do this anyway. We've got to do this in order to come be ready for the review that we know is coming by P S R C. And we would ask that it be incorporated as part of the comp plan review cycle.
Very good.
Thank you.
So I don't see any uh consternation about that, so let's move twelve forward.
Thank you.
So we're not moving eight, nine and ten forward.
You don't even want it for the public hearing?
Apparently not.
For the doc- for the docket?
If we're allowed to just take them off of the packet that's prepared for the public for the public hearing, and you know, just saying we're not really considering those anymore. Uh I I I'd be willing to do that if 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 that's that's allowable.
That's what we're saying, yeah.
I believe that it is, but I'm going to double check just to make sure these land use and development issues are very um procedural bureaucratic, as Ms. Spear has led on, so I'll make sure that that's all kosher based on where we are in the process, but
Great.
Yeah, I'll I'll make sure.
Mr. Coffield?
But Mayor, I just want to be clear. My understanding is that it is your preference that you not we not move forward with those three that are recommended by the planning commission.
Correct.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, anything else on this?
Not on this topic, but the next one, I'm here for you as well.
We appreciate that you're always here for us. So the next topic is the introduction of the twenty twenty four development regulation updates.
Thank you, and the city clerk is going to kindly switch out the presentations. This is actually going to be a tag team for myself and Assistant P P W Director Angie Silva. The development regulation packet includes uh not only what I'm about to go through with you, but also the changes that are required under what's affectionately again called uh Senate Bill fifty-two ninety related to permit changes that are required for tracking. But I'm going to be talking about other items that are also part of this package that will be in front of uh you for a public hearing and then action in November. So we have, and I'm sorry, this is on page ninety-four of your package, should you want to look at it. There's three issues that are included in this for you. Um first of all, is updating when new and updated zoning and uh regulatory language is due to the assessor treasurer every year, changing it from July to October, just to reflect the current schedule that the city uses to update those things. Second is, this is what Councilmember Brandstad was referring to just a few moments ago, updating and then re-adopting some language that was, again, unintentionally left out uh regarding both camping and recreational vehicle parks, and then also uh development standards and operation and maintenance requirements for manufactured home parks. So this is the date date change, and this is really a one sentence thing. This is it. Is um no later than October thirty first of each year, the director of the department shall notify the assessor treasurer of comp plan and regulations in effect following adoption of that year's annual review and updates.
That just provides a date that kind of falls in time with our historic process.
Correct, yeah, yeah. It was originally, as you can see there in the in the struck language, by Ju- July thirty first of each year, and sometimes it just goes longer than that, so we wanted to make it fit.
Great.
Okay. The second one, this is uh camping and recreational vehicle parks. And I'll just say first and foremost that there aren't any of these in Lakewood right now. Uh but what is being proposed is to bring back language that used to be in code that was, again, accidentally removed in case there were ever an application to have this come into the city. And what you see here on where it would be allowed is it is proposed only in the commercial zones and only as a conditional use. So no matter what, this is coming into a limited part of the city, and there would be conditions um that would have to be approved before they would ever uh move forward. And then the next few slides and what's also in the packet are the actual um proposed language. Uh and there are a few updates to this based on state law, but this is showing that uh what the regulations cover, subsections A through I are laid out in your packet. I don't have them here in the slides verbatim. But those are the types of regulations that are being proposed for addition back into the code. How long you can be there, how the parks themselves need to be developed, including setbacks, recreational areas, landscaping utilities, lighting, access and parking. Um one other point I wanted to make here is that this is strictly intended as a temporary thing. This is not permanent parking of an R V um or anything else as a dwelling. This is strictly temporary vacation type of a of a park. Correct, right now there are none in the city, correct?
And this sets a minimum acreage of not less than three acres, which frankly would be tough to find three acres in the commercial zones in Lakewood right now.
Yeah. Okay, so jumping from the camping and recreational vehicle parks, unless there's other questions. Uh we're jumping now into the manufactured mobile homes and and mobile home parks. Um once again, this was uh just kind of a Scrivener's omission, so we're bringing it back, but we have done a review and update based on current state law. And uh just for a point of reference, a couple of things that you see on this slide. First of all, a map. Uh on the right hand side is the map of all of the manufactured home parks that are within the air corridor one or two. And out of all of the parks, there's twenty-five. Uh you have nine that are in uh AC one or two and are considered non-conforming. Six hundred and seventy spaces in those nine units are non-conforming. And so what the city has done with its land use planning is say these, as well as all the other residential uses in these two zones, are eventually going to uh go away by sale, by closure, uh just over time. There's no amortization amortization schedule at this point. But this would all go away, and so someday those six hundred and seventy non-conforming units either would be relocated uh to a different part of Lakewood, a different part of Pierce County, or go away altogether. But all of that is based on the uh safety requirements or guidance that came out of the ACOs. ACUs or the air installation compatible use study for JBLM and North McCord Field.
Mr. Branford?
With respect to these particular parks that are in the air corridor, and it says 670 spaces. So that's different than the actual number of manufactured homes.
Let's see if I included it.
Or could be.
Well, it is because what we also have is information that counts out of each of these parks as of this October, how many of them have empty spaces? And we do have about a hundred unit difference citywide between the number of spaces available versus the number of occupied spaces, the number of units that are there.
So is there a way to write into this action this year? That with respect to the, within the air corridor that no new actual homes can be cited in these parks, even though there's technically a space or there once was. You know, as a way to get started on reducing that rather than letting someone come in and say, well, I've got five spaces that don't have a mobile home on them and putting the mobile homes in. If, you know, if we can recognizing their non-conforming status and say that you can't grow the total number of manufactured homes that are in the park.
Is that true?
Any greater than what is already there, and that's different than spaces.
The spaces are already there.
Right.
They are already subject to non-conforming use regulations in the city code already. And so as a result, they have to follow the non-conforming use regulations and I, I'm sorry, I can't.
Yeah, okay, but what I'm saying is that if there is a space that doesn't have a home on it, that you can't put one on. Otherwise, you potentially end up staying with 3670.
Is that accurate though?
Yeah, if I could, Mr. Mayor, what you have going on, there was some property right issues because non-conforming uses are allowed to continue to operate. And so whether what you would be doing is kind of a taking by saying you can't let those spaces be occupied would be a question we need to work with the legal department on. Yeah.
But generally, non-conforming uses are allowed to operate until they're not operating. And if they've not been operating for a time, then they can't be redone. And I think that's true of a manufactured home that was on a space where it was, now the space is empty. But re-putting a manufactured home on that space, it would seem to be you know, not the grandfathering in of a non-conforming use. It's a discontinued use that isn't going to be allowed to continued anymore because re-establishing a home on that site would be non-conforming.
That'd be for the whole park, not the individual.
Yeah, to hair split a little bit, you have the non-conforming status of an actual unit that maybe is falling apart and are you going to replace it like for like, or are you going to allow some sort of new and improved version to come on that space? And then there's the non-conforming status of the park as a whole, and what can be done within a non-conforming use based on um, again, takings law and whatever else we have in our code. We'll just have to do more research and provide that back to you. Certainly can do that.
And so then I guess I'd be interested in knowing what are our rules on density in such parks? In other words, if you've got a three acre park, what are our rules about how many spaces you can have in it? And I think that a lot of the parks that we had were created before cityhood. And so some of them have crammed a lot of spaces close together. Others are more things with more elbow room where they built, where they put them in and some have single wides and some have double wides and it's you know, it's very, but if we're trying to get to where we slowly reduce in particularly in the air corridor, the density in the air corridor, that I think that trying to find a way to say, once a space is not being used for a manufactured home, that then it can be used for some other legitimate use like yeah, some small business or something, but not not to do that. If we can find a way to do that, that would would allow for doing that. I mean, part of our problem with our non-conforming use rules in the city is that if you're a non-conforming use, you can stay there forever. We haven't got a sunsetting provision to where after you've been there long enough, then you've um, got enough return on investment to be able to go into that. And we went through this a long time ago when we were studying what Tacoma did with casinos of where they gave them X amount of time to close down based on how long it was going to take for them to recruit their investment plus something. Exactly be looked at.
Certainly can bring it back to you.
And recognizing that I don't necessarily expect that that would be able to be able to come back in the three weeks we've got before we've got to adopt this. I think, but a longer term look to be able to go and do that because we've got almost 2,000 residential units in the air corridor that quite honestly, we talk about in our plans about that, we want all of those to be go away and be replaced by new units elsewhere in the city.
Correct.
Um, which is in addition to all the growth of units that we want to try to have.
Thank you.
Okay.
So what is being proposed is an inclusion again into our code at 18A4110 where manufactured homes would be allowed. They are considered a single family unit. And so you would allow them anywhere that single family units are allowed, the homes themselves, not the parks. Um, but then the mobile home parks you see are being included as well in those areas that allow residential uses. So R1 through 4, MR12, MF123. And then this is the updated language that we would be bringing in in either underline or the stuff that's being removed is being crossed out here. Covering the intent. And then you see new language talking of where homes can be located, not parks, but individual homes. Again, they can be anywhere after being approved through a excuse me, on a residential lot. And then down at the bottom, you see permitted park locations. That's again, going back to that table we just looked at. Oops. Sorry.
So wait a second. So mobile homes, single mobile home can go in an R1 or R2 zone?
Yes, they are considered manufactured homes. Now, the mobile home is like pre-1968 or something. But manufactured homes are considered single family homes. They follow energy code, they follow building code. They're not stick built onsite. They are pre-built, but they are considered.
Like, yeah, where they come in the pieces and they put them together on site.
It could be.
I'm thinking about a mobile home though, like you see in a mobile home park, like we all kind of know of.
Those are likely the pre-1968 version of things.
Okay.
Um, the newer ones post that look very different, are built very different. And yes, they are allowed per state law, anywhere a single family home can be located. So that's why you see the change in the code.
Does that require footing, foundation, that kind of stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so are those permitted, like the buildings, the structures themselves by y'all and I? Okay. Thanks.
Yes, they are still regulated, uh, but what we're talking about when we mentioned manufactured home in the code is again, not the single wide of days of yore that you see still in a lot of places.
So, so within the allowable things over there, that is a a manufactured home or given the previous slide, a recreational vehicle being cited in a lot a allowable way to establish an ADU?
Manufactured homes, because they could be a single family detached, could under, in theory, be an ADU. A recreational vehicle could not unless it was tied down permanent and the city allowed that. What you have to do with an RV is not just pull it up next to the house and say, now it's an ADU. It has to be permanently attached in order to do so.
So I guess the question is currently, does the city allow that?
No.
So right now, that's prohibited. We'd have to change something to allow that.
Correct. There is no change to allow that.
Okay.
Uh, this is the language in particular that was lost unintentionally. It's how manufactured home parks must be operated and maintained, including things like street and sidewalk maintenance and making sure that the provision of any CCNRs that are in place for that park are enforced. And so that is it. Those are the three items that would be part of the 24 package that I'm bringing to you. This is scheduled on November 4th for a hearing, November 18th action. But again, there's a second part to this that Assistant Director Silva will be bringing to you in just a moment. So any other questions on these three?
None that I see. Thank you.
Feel a little shortened this chair. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Here tonight, we are introducing Senate Bill 5290 and proposed code amendments related to that. So we'll provide an overview this evening as well as go over at a high level the draft code amendments, starting in your packets on page 124, as well as additional implementation needs identified thus far outside of just amending the Lakewood municipal code. And last, next steps moving forward and any questions you may have. So kind of an overview of Senate Bill 5290 and it sends amends chapter 3670B RCW, which was adopted originally in the 1990s. This relates to governing laws for land use and environmental project permits while taking into consideration the Washington State Growth Management Act and the State Environmental Policy Act. The intent of this state statute, again, local project review, is to improve the efficiencies of local permitting processing while maintaining the objectives of the comprehensive plan and development regulations. Senate Bill 5290 further refines this expectation and sets forth new conditions that as a city, we must adhere to. Most subsequently, this bill establishes new permit review timelines and expectations as well as performance reporting that goes into effect in the new year. So on the major changes front there are several, and we'll walk through these in the next couple of slides. One being the determination of completeness. We must determine if an application submittal is complete or incomplete to go under review within 28 calendar days. And you'll hear calendar days as a consistent theme throughout this legislation. Complete means procedurally, meaning all minimal, minimum submission requirements have been submitted as well as payment of fees. The city can request additional information if the application submittal is sufficient. Failure to determine either incomplete or complete application on the 29th calendar day, we must procedurally deem it complete if we did not provide in writing either or.
Let me, let me ask you a quick question. So process wise, someone submits an application, we deem it incomplete within 14 days. And then they dink around, get it finally back to you with the updated information that wasn't in to make it more complete. Does the 28 day clock then start at that point or from the inception?
The great question. The 28 days starts the first time we get the submittal.
Okay.
If we determine through writing, it's incomplete, and here are the reasons why we do have to identify those readings. After the applicant returns that information, we have 14 days to respond back again.
Got it.
Okay. Next major substantive change is notice of applications. We do this today already in our code for a number of different application types. But specifically, we have to identify, we can get that out the door. After an application is deemed complete, payment of fees, we must issue a notice of application on appropriate application types within 14 calendar days. And also the state law prescribes a minimum notice contents and where that needs to go out the door. Another notification to the public is after our review and issuing a decision. A decision can be approval, approval with conditions, or denial. After that decision is issued, within 14 calendar days, we must provide that decision and then include the appropriate administrative appeals process to do so. Another major substantive change is permit review timelines. Our Lakewood municipal code identifies a number of different application types, types one through five. In this particular discussion, it really impacts types one through three, and we'll walk through those. So the new permit review timelines go into effect in the new year. The shot clock again starts at that complete application status and does not include time when we request additional information or if a project is an appeal. We have discretion at the local level to define what is the appropriate permit type and process. But also we can allow exemptions to these timelines through ordinance or resolution. In addition to, the state law encourages additional procedures in our local permitting processes to ensure that these timelines are met. In terms of the new permit review timelines, instead of 120 days, that's what state law says today, going into effect January 1st. For a type one decision that does not require a public notice or public hearing, we have 65 calendar days to issue a decision. Again, that decision is approved, approved with conditions or denial. A type two decision, which would require a public notice, such as a notice of application or a CIPA determination, would be 100 calendar days. A type three would require a public notice as well as a public hearing. That would be 170 days. So the difference on application types here would be for a type one decision to get to that 65 calendar days. You're thinking like a tree removal permit, a shoreline exemption comparative to a type two, that 100 calendar day decision, that would be a short plat in our current code. On a type three, that would be a conditional use permit that we were just speaking to about the manufactured homes. Also, the state statute through 5290, it did identify permit fee refund penalty if we do not meet these timelines. However, there are outs and ways local jurisdictions can consider to avoid those refund penalties and incorporate measures such as third-party review, increasing staffing levels, for example, or providing additional code amendments. Instead of doing a conditional use process, you allowed it through a straight building permit, so a type one, or identifying pre-application conferences instead of required to an optional status within your code.
I'll ask you a question real quick and then I'll turn to Mr. Branford. So I assume you guys internally have reviewed this in existing workflows. And the question is, how do these updated new required timelines, how are they impacting the department's workflow? And do you have enough resources to meet the timelines?
A multifaceted question. I do have a couple of slides. We'll go in where we are currently in some of our permit applications and our review timetables, as well as additional implementation measures we may need to consider beyond the code amendments. If we can get to those slides, I'll happy to address it.
I'll do that. See if Mr. Branford has something on, more on point than my multifaceted question.
Yes, on the you had types one, two, and three, yeah, there. But on a situation such as Western State Hospital, where quite frankly, we spent years doing all of the things to be able to go and do that. Is, does that fit within this, that we have to with something, with one of the colleges wanting to do something or the school district wanting to do something have to fit within this timeline now? Or are we still with public or with facilities that need a master site plan? Are those still work on them until they're done? Or are they now compressed into this timeframe?
Great question. Depends on the project type as well as the scope. So for example, Western State Hospital requires not only So for example, Western State Hospital requires not only land use entitlements, but your construction permits, which is your site development, your horizontal construction, as well as your vertical, your building permits. So three different stages essentially. So under a land use entitlement, they had to go typically through a type one or type two process. So under this, this would qualify under those timetables and those review goals. So if it was a type two application, let's say it was um, boy geez, um, not Western State, but let's say it was a C P A determination, for example, which they had to do. We would have a hundred day, a hundred days to process that, issue the notice of application, but also issue the determination with then within that timetable. What state statute does allow local jurisdictions is to exempt certain project types from those considerations. What is included in the draft proposal does exempt public capital projects from those timetables and those required timetables. In addition to, it does exempt site development, construction permits, which is not uncommon where you see local governments proposing fifty two ninety amendments right now, the civil infrastructure. Even though they have the review goals of a hundred days or a hundred and seventy days, they're exempted from the penalties of not meeting those timetables by the reporting requirements we'll get to.
So in in a, in a complicated project that has sequential permits that are required, uh, C P A to be able to go and do that, each one of those permitting boxes has its own timeframe now so that you didn't. It's just once it's complete, they don't have to finish every single one of them, but it's because they have to as the project goes along, be resubmitting for the the next permit, the next permit, and it goes on. And and the the clocks that are being generated by the legislation are unique to each permit as it is requested. Is that so? So so we're not like somehow in twenty eight days got to improve the entire Western State project?
Completely fair, but also that's under our current application process. So right now, as a city, we identify a separate application for every proposed action. There's a separate application for C P A, which if I was in a different jurisdiction, C P A happens to be maybe incorporated in your land use permit as a review step, not a separate application of fee associated with that. It's incorporated in a consolidated review. That in that example, it wouldn't be a standalone permit with its own associated timeline. It would be incorporated in that parent land use permit. So let's say it's a conditional use permit. We know there's going to be a C P A determination that would have to be issued as part of that proposed development, for example. Instead of having a conditional use permit in a C P A application, that C P A review would be integrated into that overall land use decision process.
So I have, I presume that the the genesis of this regular, of this this legislation and 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 this new standard of timelines was um was 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 promoted by the legislature because of problems. Okay. Was Lakewood one of the problem children that contributed to the need to do this?
I think a lot of jurisdictions struggle with meeting application timelines. I don't think it was the legislature predominantly being the driver of this. I think there was a lot of advocacy groups from whether the building industry, real estate industry, but also cities and counties looking about housing of housing affordability and economic development. How the application and permitting process was a key component of that to ensure more streamlined and predictable processes. As we know, there are multiple layers and there's multiple regulations that have to be reviewed for compliance.
So looking ahead, what kind of situations do you think would get in the way of us meeting the twenty eight day timeline?
I think the question was related to what could get in the way of the
I I I'm saying you, what kind of problems could cause us to not be able to meet the twenty eight days?
For application completeness?
Yes.
Um, I think it has to do with submittals. I think the whole host of things. Covid had a huge impact on permit review times when we went back to that stages. Mass staff exodus and we didn't have third party review contracts could also play a role in that. Application volume. If we go from a hundred applications a month to three hundred applications a month and our resources didn't match that level, that would be a reprioritization of focus and work for our our department to make sure we get to those timely time timelines in a consistent manner. So there's a variety of different factors that could play into that. But what we'll be talking about is instituting some process improvements as well as instituting additional consideration for third party contractors as well as extra hires to avoid those scenarios as much as possible.
So do you think that that in terms of doing that here, the the things you're considering doing are not at the expense of the quality of the reviews?
No, I think we're all professionals and we are all tasked to implement the code in our respective review divisions. Part of that is kind of checks and balances and having standard operating procedures in place. So any staffer, whether it's their first day or they've been here fifteen years, knows exactly what that step in that process, what codes they need to check for compliance and what is the appropriate process and procedure to request additional information to make sure that we do get that application to an approval state consistent with the comprehensive plan and the regulations itself.
Cause I I think, you know, if I'm a customer service aspect, it would not want to get into a a default determining something is incomplete and closing it out and sending it back to someone that it, when it is an application that is fixable. Because I think the folks in the, in the, in the, out in the community that are trying to get a garage built or or whatever it is, okay, you know, don't want to do that, but they also sometimes tend to be the people that aren't most proficient at together, complete applications. So so, you know, I would, we would would want to look to well, we have to do things quickly to also do things as hands on as possible with 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 those applicants that probably are in need of 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 having coaching uh to be able to get get through those things. And then I guess, I guess the other thing is, is that, you know, as a council, we're in the, in the process of building the next biennial budget and I was um, uh, I guess I would defer to my colleagues because I wasn't here for the budget presentation as to as to whether some consideration of these factors was built into the budget proposal or if as we get into twenty twenty five and 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 we go down that we decide that there is a a a resource need that um that we don't wait until the twenty seven, twenty eight budget to try to do it, but that we addressed it earlier. But but thank you.
One quick question. Sorry. Let you go through the slides. So in those type ones through three decisions that have the certain calendar day time requirements, uh, and sorry for the ignorance, but in a non-full service city, are some of these examples inclusive of requirements that would be on the county, not on the city, that impact the timelines?
That's correct. So Senate Bill fifty two ninety or the state law related to local project review applies to cities and counties. Where there's been different interpretations or very flat out, it does not apply is when it comes to junior taxing districts that may provide certain utility services or septic systems, for example, that they are not required. What we have to be creative at a local level when meeting these timetables and what is required within those timetables? Structure our workflow and processes to monitor the metric to meeting that and make sure we're consistently reporting and exceeding those principles.
Right.
I know there's been
Can't control the county portion like sewer that may be involved in a type two or type three?
Correct, which would have their own permitting process and county rules would either exempt or not exempt that from their own fifty two ninety timetables.
We're not going to get spanked if it comes into applications deemed complete, but part of it is impacted by the county and its sewer review?
Yep. Absolutely. I think it's important to remember the local project review is related to land use and environmental permits. There has been a lot of debate since fifty two ninety passed, whether that crests into infrastructure permits like a sewer permit or even a building permit. I would say it's not consistently interpreted, but that's part of why we work with our local council.
Councilor Pearson. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to follow up on that, so when a project is like, say, a plat is proposed in Lakewood, one of the requirements is that they have to go get a sewer development review by Pierce County. So the the applications deemed, is it, is the application deemed complete for the the plat? And and then like one of the request items would be that you have to have a sewer development review or you have to have the sewer development review completed prior to applying for your final plat?
Great question. Our current workflow before we issue a permit, so there's a difference between an approval or approval with conditions versus issuing a permit to start construction. So there is a nuance there in the terminology. And number of our application types that do require that sewer permit, you know, justification, I have it in hand. I can construct this utility consistent with whatever the design standard is. Typically, we would hold off and not issue the permit, even though we've checked off of all of our required approval steps.
Okay. Um, and so like, you know, I I work at Pierce County and deal with this a bit. And so one of the items that's been, it's kind of a major change is that we're not allowing uh at Pierce County, uh, applications to come in. They used to be able to run health department applications concurrently. Well, now as part of this, that's part of the the pre-check that you have to have your health stuff done and approved by the health department before you can make your application. So, yeah, that that's I I want to, I want to see the rest of your report. But one of the things I just kind of want to throw out there and we'll touch on it later is is about, you know, allowing folks to kind of maybe opt out of some of these requirements as far as, you know, okay, I understand that I can't make applica- if if we, you know, if if Lakewood did go that way where you have to get your sewer approval first before you can apply or your health department thing first where you can apply, that you that they could have the opportunity to opt out of, you know, hey, if we don't meet the timelines, the city's not going to be held responsible for any sort of fee, you know, incursions and that sort of thing and allow them to get their application and get vested for their land use applications and, you know, kind of have a win win for both people that, hey, yeah, it may not be a complete application, you know, for the fifty two ninety requirements, but you guys said that we're not going to, you know, have to pay back your fees because you, we sign this waiver or something and and we'll let you get in and get vested before whatever happens.
That opt in, opt out procedure is already in fifty two ninety and part of the proposed code amendments for eighteen A twenty specifically. So going on to another major change as relates to fifty two ninety has to do with annual performance reporting. This starts March of the new year. These reports must be made available to the public as well as submitted to the Department, Washington State Department of Commerce. It is required, um, performance reporting based on population size of twenty thousand people or more, but also if you're in a billable lands jurisdiction, which Pierce County and the city are a part of per state statute. And the intent again is to assess whether or not we're meeting the various timetables. Just for um some informational note here, the Department of Commerce is creating the template for this annual reporting. We'll have a better sense of how to set up our permitting process and our reporting features in our hope to new permit system coming in the new year. So that's going to guide us. Additional provisions in fifty two ninety guide that after uh the first year, first of twenty twenty six, if we're not meeting those timelines, fifty percent or more of the time, we must incorporate additional measures to um our next comprehensive plan cycle to again, get closer to those review goal targets.
When the slide says annual performance reporting begins three, one, twenty five, is that the start date of a reporting permit or the date to report twenty twenty four data?
It would be twenty twenty four data.
So but during twenty twenty four, the rules that you outlined to us weren't in place?
Yes, sir.
So 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 it's the twenty twenty four data is kind of a baseline of where you're starting from?
That's exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
So now we'll go into kind of just a high overview of the draft code amendments in three different chapters in eighteen A. This is also covered in the memo within your packet as well. Like any code amendment process, um, we do look at complying with state law, but we also set other update goals for this as well. And and we, part of this uh code amendment project, we kind of strive to improve usability, not just for staff, but the customers, whether it's their first time going through the application process or a seasoned developer, to ensure predictability. Here is the process, here's the steps, and this is how we get to that goalpost. In addition to that, another update goal is to increase transparency and ensure accountability. Who does what and where and when, but also again, ensuring transparency of the process itself. And last but not least, streamlining those processes, which is a combination of the code amendments you see here tonight, but also process improvements using lean six sigma principles I'm going to get to in a little bit later. So kind of high fly overview of the proposed amendments in three kind of buckets. So chapter eighteen A ten is really kind of just a basic provisions chapter. And moving kind of left to right on your screen, the goal is to consolidate, redirect permit procedures to the landing base, which is, you know, chapter eighteen A twenty. Right now, our code sprinkles different permit procedures through multiple titles as well as chapters. Have one landing page so everybody knows where to go. And this is intended to streamline the code for ease of use. Another major aspect of this chapter change is reorganization. So reorganizing and recognizing the department is now planning a public works, but also what is the appropriate decision body? And this is really more of a housekeeping amendment. And last but not least, clarify, um, specifically in Senate Bill fifty two ninety, it does exempt interior structure alteration. So if I come into an existing building, I move and stuff it around, that's a building permit. Some jurisdictions, not the city currently, requires a site plan for exterior improvements. The state law prohibits that to occur, even though we as a city do not require it. We define it and make that absolutely clear that a site plan is not required per state law. Moving right along, we're going into chapter eighteen A twenty. This is kind of the administrative chapter and really the landing spot of our permit procedures in the municipal code. You'll see it's kind of two major proposed changes to this chapter to comply with fifty two ninety. One is intended to streamline, so identify those required timelines we spoke about earlier. We're also proposing to refine what is a complete application and the associated timelines to achieve that, as well as address the notice application and notice of decision contents and timing. And last but not least, the proposed amendments in this chapter are intended to modify, to streamline and improve transparency, to clarify the process, to modify what is approved permits, meaning I've already got a decision on my land use permit, but I want to modify it a little bit. What is considered a minor amendment to that modification? Or what is considered a major modification to that approved amendment and what is the appropriate process to go through? And last, there's a proposed chapter, uh, eighteen A thirty, which is our discretionary permit information and really cover two basic things. One is about administrative conditional use permits. Our code currently defines what the permissibility of a use is either permitted or conditional use, meaning you go straight to the hearing examiner. But it doesn't allow that middle ground where, yeah, it's appropriate to have additional conditions, but it may not be necessary to go to a public hearing all the time for those types of proposed uses. So what this sets the stage, it does not change the permissibility in any use. It sets the uh framework. It sets the uh, framework and the foundation for that language for a future consideration of what I like to call ACOPS, administrative conditional use permits. It identifies the criteria, which is similar to a conditional use permit, what's the appropriate process? And in the future code amendment, we go through the permissibility of all of our different residential, industrial, um, you name it, types of uses and identify what is appropriate from potentially, instead of being a permitted or conditional use, is it more appropriate for an administrative conditional use permit? You still get the notification, but do we need to go to the public hearing to meet that hundred and seventy days? Another proposed amendment in this is housekeeping. This is to ensure internal consistency, but also redirects back to that landing page of eighteen A twenty for your permit procedures. Remember, things are sprinkled throughout our various titles. What's the appropriate permit process and procedure? We want to go to one landing spot for ease of use and clarification. Okay. Just moving right along because it's freezing in here. Uh, Planning Commission did review the draft proposal. Uh, so early September, they held a study session as well as a public hearing and rendered their recommendation in early October. Through resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh-six, the Planning Commission uh, issued the recommendation of the proposed amendments as presented. And just go into, uh, Mr. Mayor, some of your questions on implementation needs. We know just amending the code will not get us to those goalposts. So, um, as we mentioned before, fifty-two ninety sets forth new expectations as a local government. And as a result, we need to look at the system as a whole. This by its very foundation strives to incorporate lean principles and a variety of operational improvements beyond the amendments discussed today. Lean is an improvement methodology used by government of all types to optimize the efficiency and quality of their processes. Using lean principles and tools, staff leverage their existing knowledge and expertise to analyze workflows. The workflow, the silly uh, map you see there, that actually happens to be one of our site development processes. To understand what those steps are, make it visible, but also identify what is wasteful or not added value to the overall end objective, which is consistency with the comprehensive plan and development regulations. By going through a lean process, we understand all our respective roles and responsibilities, which are different, how they're interrelated, and how we need to interact and work together in a more efficient and effective way. I am proud to say, in the month of November, we are partnering with the Department of State Auditor's Office, who will be coming forth and bringing training um, to our staff. So in the first part of November, staff and our leadership team will get an overview training of lean process improvements and what the methodology and terminology is. And our first step towards process improvements, when we are looking at our associated workflows and steps for our largest application volume, which is our residential building permit. So in addition to uh, code amendments, um, the department has already embarked on a number of process improvements. I've mentioned a couple of them already, but staff training is one of them, including some of the lean process uh, six sigma training coming up on November. But this is also instituting standard operating procedures or SOPs, describing the who, what, when, and why, and how of a particular action to ensure consistency, regardless of what staffer is assigned on this particular task. In addition to, we are looking and updating and consolidating over sixty-five application types that are standard applications that we ask customers to submit and de- uh, complete all the required information. How we can make that more user-friendly um, is one of our current goals and part of why we're looking at a new permit software. In addition to, we are already embarking and expanding our informational educational resources, especially when we look at our customer base. We have seasoned developers, but we got folks that have never gone through the permit process and likely will never go through it again. We want to make sure that's a very good customer experience for them. And that includes informational brochures, redesigning our website to have specific steps and information available to them so they can walk in with good feasibility of their project and understand what those requirements are. We hope to launch a new planning and public works website by the first of the year, which coincides with fifty-two ninety also going into effect. And last but not least, we are embarking on an amazing, likely stressful adventure of updating our new permit software. For some statistics, we know eighty percent of our customers, whether they're calling us or coming to the front counter, are asking about current permits or inspections. That means what we have available on our permit portal dashboard is not giving them the information to find that easily or where they are in the process itself. So that's the application portal, that's the dashboard of where their project is in the overall review process. In addition to that, we also know by our current planning system, to meet the reporting requirements that are due in March of twenty twenty-five, I know about nine staff within our department pull different reports, workload metrics, where we are statistically in our review times, et cetera. If I did, that's about roughly forty hours a week. If I took everyone's hourly so- hourly rate, we spend about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year just trying to understand what the system is doing versus actually focusing on the provenance itself. Those are the type of metrics we as a department want to bring war towards the public, the city manager, but also the city council and understanding where we are in that process, where we can identify some efficiencies or where we're lacking in resources itself. But we need to have some opportunity to make those improvements and identify where those statistics are to inform that decision-making. And just to get a snapshot, because you're probably already going to sleep, um, here's a snapshot on residential building permits. This is our largest volume of applications we receive here at the city. So about average for twenty twenty-four, we're looking at forty-three days for first cycle review. Remember, a type-one decision is decision by sixty-five days. Even though we've had an about nine percent application increase volume compared to last year, this is just where we are in various review disciplines, which do include outside providers for both fire and water. And just another. And just another snapshot on the commercial side of the building permits. We're averaging about forty-four uh, days for first cycle review. And we've actually had about about two percent decrease um, compared to this time last year. And just to wrap it up and wrap it up and get to questions here on tentative timelines, similar to the docket as well as the other twenty twenty-four code amendments, we're looking at a public hearing um, on November fourth with proposed action by, I believe, if I can like read and it's entirely proposed action by the eighteenth and go into effect January first of twenty twenty-five. And with that, hopefully we can start a bonfire with all these proposed amendments to warm up.
Anything on the HBAC uh, update? Mr. Pearson and Mr. Brantstone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just wanted to commend you on the great presentation, very detailed, um, lots of good information. You know, kind of laying out the whole uh, Senate bill and and the requirements and why we're we're going that way. Couple slides back on the timeline, so can you just touch on, you know, this is where we're at now? What, if we did no changes, kind of where are we at, meeting timeframes, you know? What is this, where does this put us at with the fifty-two ninety timeframes? It doesn't look like we're terribly far off is what I'm kind of looking at.
Great question. I think to meet the sixty-five day decision goal target, instead of forty-four days, I think I said for the residential, you're looking at for first cycle at thirty days. You can see some outliers on where some of those review spikes are. Um, includes development engineering, which again, if you work at different jurisdictions, development engineering gets into that high level of civil engineering and design and gets very complicated uh, review. So there's a number of different strategies we're already deploying. Um, again, we reopened our third-party uh, requests for proposals, so bringing on more contractors to help when the workload peaks or we have someone wanting to go on a vacation, for example. But also instituting some extra hire approaches, so folks that are temporary part-time employees that may work at other locations, but would like to uh, bring in an extra pocket change and help us with um, some backlog reviews specifically, not only in development engineering, but also in our building reviews as well.
So on the extra hire versus uh, consultants, I've I've had some firsthand experience dealing with what you get back from the consultants and the consultants are, there's really no incentive for them to work with a customer. Quite frankly, they're they're too far detached from customers anyway. They have to review the plans, send it back to the city, the city, you know, it's it's a very transactional thing. And I've found that they're very black and white. There's, there's no benefit in them being lenient at all because quite frankly, it puts risk on them that's, you know, so my, if we can, if you guys can, you know, create other improvements, that would be like my least approachable, you know, way of dealing with with additional volume would be to farm it out to third-party staff because we're doing the people who are permitting work in the city, I think a disservice by not working with people in the gray area when there's every, you know, there's a lot of stuff that's like, ah, you could go this way, could go that way. So I would just be cautious to that because I've seen what you get back on some of these and it's like just so black and white that it's like, come on, you know, could have gotten closer. But I'm, 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 I'm excited for uh, what's to come with this and I think that, you know, we'll be right on track um with these new changes. Thanks.
Justin, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah.
And Mr. Brantstone.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You said you're going to upgrade your equipment, your process. And I don't know if it's possible, but is, if if there's a way that you can put a checklist beside each item that that we require, the city requires. I think that's one of the biggest things I hear from the uh, members is the fact that they get what they see done, but then there's something that's not there that they need. Is there a way that you can improve that process?
A thousand percent, Deputy Mayor. It's something we've been talking about internally, not just application checklist for the applicant, but actually as part of those standard operating procedures, a review checklist. If I'm assigned to do a planning review, I'm assigned to do a building review, give me a standard operating procedure and a checklist in which I need to know, boom, 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 this is what I need to review for compliance. Part of the um, permit software upgrades, so stepping back, um, the city was fortunate through a competitive process to receive a Department of Commerce grant to help us with that. Um, that was two hundred and forty thousand dollars. That con grant agreement will come eventually to council for final approval through motion. But with that said, part of that was also soliciting what softwares are out there nationwide or even globally? What is available and what can be the biggest bang for the buck and improve not only the back of the house for staff as a reviewer, as an inspector, the reporting requirements we need to mean, but also front of the house. So the application portal, the information customers will have at their fingertips twenty-four seven, whether I'm on my mo- mobile device, my iPad, or sitting at my computer at home. And part of that and the reason why out of eleven proposals we received, reason why we are currently negotiating with Camino Technologies is part of that front of the house, that application portal and that checklist through digitally, not a PDF, I fill it out handwriting, I can do it online, one hundred percent online. Walk me through the various pieces. I need to do so if I want to do X. What applications do I need to fill out? What are the submittal requirements to fi- fill that out? What is required versus optional? And what's the associated fee before I even hit submit?
The other question I had was that if I have a permit in process and I have to do an amendment, where do I stand as far as the workflow?
Great question. It has to do, what's the proposed amendment? If I went to a residential to a commercial project, I would argue that's a brand-new application. You start at the beginning. But let's say, instead of a hundred units, I want to do a hundred and twenty-five units of that mold my family. That's just a revision and typically we can process that in. But it's also the goals we set for ourselves. So if this was a type-one building permit residential, I have sixty-five calendar days to issue a decision. Internally, we need to set goals on my first cycle of review, meaning planning, building, development, engineering. We got to complete all of those steps within thirty days. But let's say there's a request for information. We have to set a goal to meet that sixty-five decision date. That second revision, once we get it, it'd be fifteen, twenty days before we need to review that to make sure it's in compliance. Let's say, uh, we need a little bit more for building. That third cycle, that third resumittal, if we're not at a place at a decision within fifteen days, that's a serious conversation we need to have with the applicant and how to get them to succeed within the parameters of the development regulations.
Great. So thank you about those things through. So thank you.
Okay, you forgive me, I'm just trying to not as well versed in the terminology as someone like like it. But I, but I guess I don't understand what a first cycle review is.
Great question. So when we get an application, right, and it's deemed complete, there's different elements to the municipal code that we have to verify for compliance. So that gets parceled out to different subject matter experts, whether you're an engineer or a planner or a plans examiner, looking at building codes specifically. When we take a look at that, that's the first application submittal, the first take we get into it. And which is not unusual, is that we may request additional information or studies or something of that nature to get it close to, if I was a planner, I'm looking at the zoning code. If I'm a building plans reviewer, I'm looking at Title fifteen, our building code standards. Let's say they request for more information. When they request that, that first cycle review, that's complete. It's returned to the applicant. But when the applicant res submits, that's their second resumittal on that application, dubbed second cycle review.
Okay, thank you. And I I just appreciate you, you being here and then taking time to both prepare and 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 the time to answer our questions in terms of being able to go and do that. I I think that you uh, you definitely come across a understanding the challenge. And that's ahead of you, but but with uh, some some confidence that you're going to be able to meet these uh, new things to be able to go and do that. So I'm, I'm encouraged on behalf of the city that that were, that were and and the staff is a, is a, i- i- is committed to being successful and not just successful at, at the numbers, but also being successful in the customer service attribute to be, to be able to go and do that. That, uh, I think that my uh, one caution that I would want to say that 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 to the extent that there may need to be some help in terms of resources or something from from the, from the, uh, from the city council is that uh, um, one thing that we, I think we want to do is we want to make sure that that either you or any of the staff get into a burnout situation of of trying to do uh, make too many bricks with no straw, you know. I understand, but thank you.
Councilor Laura Sal. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I want to echo what Councilmember Brantstone said and just say thank you for being here. I really appreciate you using sort of cross-industry best practices, embracing lean, continuous improvement, six sigma, that sort of thing. I think that will make a big difference in the customer experience and our throughput that we get as we go forward. So thank you.
I too want to echo my thanks for the overview and certainly the the embrace of the state requirements that require us to be better, right? Uh, and I I I'm hopeful that this is actually going to make life easier for your department as well with more processes in place that are transparent and clear and uh, ever-evolving for improvement. You you know, if there's one
You, you, you know, i- if there's one level of call that I get in my position, it's people who are cranky about untimely, in their opinion, building permit issuance. And I get it recently a lot. Uh, and one would hope, and this is my hope, is perhaps there's some opportunity to communicate these significant updates, these efforts that you're undergoing with the development community to say, we've heard you, here's what we're doing. Here's how we're going to bring you along in a process so we can be better as a community, as a development community, as a public entity that's processing development, permanent applications and the like uh, for the development community. So if, if there's some mechanism, some outreach effort or a, a mini forum that you might be able to do to kind of provide this overview to those, especially those who've been communicating vociferously, and I can get you the names, the manager has them. Uh, that would be helpful. The other question I had, when I look at the requirements for first cycle review or whatever the statute, one always wonders, what can we do to also provide some bumpers for not just review, but issuance of the actual permit? So we get to yes at the end. Is that kind of what we're talking about too, the timelines for that? Because you know, deadlines on first cycle review or whatever are one thing, getting to yes and getting it out the door so they can commence construction. That's the sixty-five days to get the final permit issued?
Well, I would try to get away from getting to yes, because getting to yes often alludes to we as staff who are tasked to implement the code, allowing a prohibited use to be allowed in a, you know, in a zone that doesn't allow, for example. But with that said, just I want to clarify that issuance piece, Mr. Mayor, and the intent on that question. Are we talking about getting to that decision point, that approval, or getting that permit issued so they can start construction?
Yep, the latter.
The latter. I think some of the challenges we've noticed in this, it goes back to some of your comments about partnering with the industry. Is one of the things I've noticed since joining the team in May is a lot of our permits and application types come in with incomplete information and that we're accepting them for that good customer service. We'll get you under review to get you out the door, but I don't have your contractor information. On a building permit legally by state law, we cannot issue a building permit without a co- licensed contractor in the state of Washington. We sit on weeks of an approved building permit, waiting for a contractor to be identified, for example. We also come in to issues where um, they switch project engineers or design architects midstream. So then we're in this holding pattern, or in some examples, switch the project manifestly. And that we didn't ask, no, you're in a new application, because we want to have that good customer service. We keep them under review, waiting for additional information, even though the project has substantially been modified since the first time we received it. So now we're in this revised notice of, notice of application stage or what have you, depending on the application type. So it goes back to that partnership, the understanding that we are maybe in arranged marriage. We don't want to be married, but we are partners in economic as well as residential growth in the city. And understanding what we need to be successful in our role so they can be successful as part of that dialogue. And I do believe different approaches can be established to open those communications.
Maybe it would be effective to have some sort of a forum, if you will, you know, to the folks about processes and timelines so they understand it too and, and get some perhaps better perspective on on all the good work you have to do to make it compliant with code and not just getting the yes. I get that. Okay, any other questions? We appreciate it. Thank you very much for that. Look forward to it. Well, that concludes the items for discussion during the study session tonight. Uh, the items tentatively scheduled for the November four regular city council meeting are listed. You can see those. And uh, they are significant, it looks like, for next regular meeting. And now we'll turn to reports by the city manager, Mr. Caulfield.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers. Just a few updates. I just wanted to let you know, um, tomorrow, myself, the mayor and a couple of staff, we're going to be meeting with Congresswoman Strickland and her team at her request to give her an update on some key transportation projects. This is generated by the fact that she has uh, provided us um, with uh, funding, for example, in support of South Tacoma Way, as well as the Raze Grant. So uh, we're going to be with her and just give her a a rundown of um, some of the key projects that are currently in the queue and, 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 and moving forward. Um, the only other updates I have for you is um, as it relates to your schedule. So just a friendly reminder, a week from this Thursday on November seventh will be the um, elected officials council for SSMCP at Eagles Pride Golf Course, and that's from eight AM to ten AM. And all elected officials are invited and if sure you got an invite. If you haven't, let us know and we'll get you squared away there. Um, that weekend on Saturday and Sunday, the ninth and tenth is our fall community cleanup. If you have an interest in coming out and volunteering and just kind of chit-chatting with people as they go through the line, please let us, let us know and um, we can get you um, talkative for um, for a shift, if you will. Um, and then um, the following week on Tuesday, November twelfth, which is also you'll um, your study session will be on the twelfth since Monday is Veterans Day holiday. Um, again, just a reminder from eight AM to noon that uh, United Way is having their annual poverty to possibility summit. And that's um, at the Hotel Murano in downtown Tacoma. And then the next day on Wednesday, November thirteenth, um, is your desserts on the driveway event over at Springbrook Connections, which is over at their at their building on uh, Solberg Drive. So uh, with that, Mayor, that's, that's that's at six PM. That's correct. All those items should be on your calendar. So, but with that, that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Caulfield? Thank you. Very good. Okay, let's turn to council comments briefly. Let's start with Mr. Brandstetter.
Mr. Mayor, I, it's all I uh, I apologize for, for, for being gone on, on family business and, and, and leaving you with uh, not just three meetings, but five. To handle those, those who didn't do that, uh, so uh, you know, I'll, I'll shoulder my share of the workload going forward to, to the ex- the ex- the extent that I can to be able to go and do that. I uh, yeah, 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 I would say that I've been getting some uh, information from me from a variety of sources and emails to do that, that uh, speak to the viability of uh, of, of, of permanent supportive housing projects uh, around the country. Of, of where a, a lot of cities, Washington DC, Seattle, uh, yeah, yeah, others in smaller jurisdictions that that funded these projects with the expectation that that rent payments would then pay the ongoing costs of going to do that and that uh, the combination of inflation, uh, that are ri- rising insurance costs and, 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 and also the uh, uh, the changes in the landscape regarding uh, eviction rules have created to the point to where some of these projects are starting to go underwater. Washington DC, for instance, declared a moratorium on using any more public money that they had set aside for new projects because they have to use the money they have to shore up existing projects. While they try to figure out what to do with their eviction regulations and there's similar discussions going on in Seattle. And I haven't heard anything like that about the, the, those sorts of projects here in Pierce County uh, or ours. But we do have projects like that. For instance, the uh, the, the Lehigh Project over on, on, on actually on that we helped fund the acquisition of being able to go and do that. We're looking for ongoing costs to be able to be met by uh, improvements, but that the idea was they were going to charge the rent of thirty percent of people's incomes, but at the same time, you know, you know, you know, I, I, I don't know whether they're the, the problem is, is that if, if those things are not making it, they're going to come back to public troughs. And to try to, 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 try to recoup that, to do that. And uh, and so, and, and I, and I would be interested in, if, because Lhasa is going to be moving and, and while their, their facility has been in that realm for a while, it has been in that realm operationally funded to essentially for their, for their housing units by the Tacoma Housing Authority up until they've just re- recently revert, revert, reversed to that. So I think that we ought to be able to look to say that what can we do to make sure that they have good fiscal things in place, okay? And that we're, and that we in terms of rules that we're going to put on them don't, don't do things that make it either economically unviable for them or economically costher for us to sustain. Um, to be able to go and do that. And, and, and Mr. Bokey, I guess that I would say that, that that's maybe a topic that the SHAPE Executive Council ought to decide over the next year to look at is how healthy is that situation in uh, in Pierce County? Because the, the ones that have come to light nationally have been where there have been whole groups of housing providers that waited until things were desperate before they started raising flags. But uh, i- i- in any event, I'm uh, uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm glad to be back and I'm looking forward to the all the things that are on the agenda and I'm uh, it, it seems like the next meeting is, 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 is primarily public hearings, so I'll make sure to remember my hearing aids. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Bokey from afar.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I, I really don't have much. We have a SHAPE meeting uh, this Friday morning, so I'll be attending that.
That's it? Very good. Councilmember Laura Sella?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing for me tonight.
Okay, Councilmember Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I will, uh, well, I, I appreciate the uh, the article the city posted about the Interlochen uh, project and we got a lot of comments about people wanting to save all the trees along the arterial there and I thought that what was particularly good about, you know, how, how it was portrayed was that kind of telling people through, you know, through, through the review process and the design process that, you know, this is actually better than originally intended. The original design showed like removing over like ninety trees or something and then a, an alternative design was was completed to, to save, you know, almost half of that, I think, or maybe even more. I think they're only going to remove thirty trees. So um, that was a timely, timely response, uh, and it seemed to kind of calm the nerves of a lot of folks uh, about where the project is really at. There was some people thinking that it was on the other side of Interlock and across the bridge and some different things. So I just wanted to commend the city for city staff for doing a good job on that. I appreciated the uh, detailed presentations tonight um, from Ms. Kraus and, and Ms. Silva. Very well done and I will be out on the Monday of Thanksgiving week, which is the twenty-fifth. I'll be gone. Yep, that's it.
Very good, Deputy Mayor. Wow, very good. Yes, you are good. You're all great. We appreciate you. And uh, my comments uh, start off with thanks to staff tonight. Great presentations, good reports. Appreciate that. Uh, well, well done and much appreciated. Last Tuesday, we had the copy house of the mayor sort of communication forum. It was presented by Ms. Silva and uh, Mr. Remack advising a pretty sizable group uh, in the audience there about the housing issues and some of the planning issues they brought forth tonight. And I think it was, you know, really helpful information. And my comment to the residents present were, you know, A, to thank them for their time, thank them for getting educated about the bumpers that we're faced with from state law about housing density issues and how we're trying to comply with the, the state law. Uh, so that we can continue to receive, you know, the various grants we do get for the significant infrastructure projects. So I appreciate their work that night and the residents who showed up. On Saturday, I attended the EFN Emergency Food Network Gala Dinner. Uh, they've recognized Lakewood as a significant partner, certainly in the warehouse project. So thanks to you for the investment in the, the warehouse project with our ARPA monies. It was a huge uh, crowd. They raised over five hundred thousand dollars, which was significant for sure. There were a lot of very uh, significant investors in EFN that night at, you know, thirty thousand dollar levels. Twenty thousand dollar levels. It was really, really amazing to see. So good for them. Today, I, as the Vice Chair of the Pierce Transit Commission, I got to be involved in the graduation ceremony for thirteen new drivers. Pierce Transit has been doing yeoman's work in attracting and not only retaining, but attracting new drivers to go through their education process uh, to serve. And that will enhance service on the routes because that's been one of the impediments is to have enough drivers. And it's a constant challenge, right, to to fill that void and they're almost fully um, filled now with the requisite number of drivers. So that's fantastic. Uh, and then finally, just to piggyback on Councilmember Pearson's comments about the Interlock and project. Uh, I really appreciated Ms. Grimley's communication out there on social media. It's really important. Uh, it's absolutely fine and good to have robust constructive public comment. But the robo emails that we've all received, at least I received, I assume you guys did as well, uh, were less than a hundred percent accurate, shall we say. And it was helpful to have Ms. Grimley kind of dial that back and say, here's what the project is, here's what it is not. And in terms of demands that we uh, suspend the project, uh, accusations that we're paving over Lakewood uh, that we're exacerbating single-handedly, climate change. Uh, you know, in this era of hyperbole politically charged environments, I would hope that we reduce the hyperbole in our own community and really focus on uh, good factual information. And that's why I appreciated what Ms. Grimley provided. And hopefully, better, more educated, constructive feedback from those who have, they're passionate, which is great, but we have to be constructive about it. And I just thought it would be helpful to kind of, you know, remind all of us uh, not to pat ourselves on the back, but when it comes to issues about climate change and trees and the sidewalk projects that are really important, I think it's important for us to also recognize and remember that we were one of the first jurisdictions to complete a very significant energy and climate change chapter to the comprehensive plan. That uh, the city, as a result of that work, received an award from the governor's office, the Department of Commerce, uh, from an administration that is, shall we say, very climate friendly. They certainly want to, you know, enhance environmental work and we got an award for our work from the governor's office. The significant work that we have done from an infrastructure standpoint on the roundabouts as part and parcel to many of the street improvement projects. Were in part uh, in recognition that idling cars and uh, auto emissions are one of the principal contributors to climate change issues. And having those roundabouts actually enhance the flow of traffic and reduce idling and reduce emissions. So we should be thankful and remind our residents of that work. Sidewalks, as we all know, are important, not only just to connect people where they live to where they'd like to be, whether it's uh, community events or shopping or parks. But it also gets people out of cars. And the more connected we can make our city, the better we can enhance getting people out of their automobile, uh, automobiles. And in terms of trees, I think it seems to um, be missed from the uh, robo emails that we're receiving. The fact that Lakewood has been one of the first jurisdictions to actually embark on an urban forestry program. And we funded it to the tune of two hundred And we funded it to the tune of two hundred thousand dollars. And we have a mitigation tree fund that recognizes that on occasion, there are going to be impacts that are just difficult to avoid, but we do require mitigation in those circumstances. So I I I know I'm preaching to the choir, but I think it's important sometimes for the public to hear that uh we are doing a lot to balance out the impacts with good project work that's critical for the community to move forward to be the vibrant, uh connected pedestrian-oriented community as best as we can be. So we balance a lot of factors, and I think we do a darn good job. So that's all I had to say on that. Unless there's anything else, I was going to the order. We're adjourned.